Good evening. Like to call the meeting to order, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for joining us on a Wednesday evening, right? It's Wednesday? Okay, just making sure. All right, can I get approval of minutes of the minutes of meetings held March 26th and April 4th, please?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Right, that motion passes. Bev, I see we've got five people wishing to address the board, but it's all on a board topic, so we will get to that when that report comes up on the agenda. All right, can I get approval of the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion passes. All right, Deanne, good news report.
Good evening, everyone. Just a quick and shameless plug for an event that's happening this weekend, this Saturday in Sioux Falls. The Sioux Falls Storm Football Team is hosting a Night of Hope and Caring. It's our second annual event, a fundraiser to benefit the Sioux Falls schools without PTAs and PTOs. It's a family-friendly way to support our elementary schools on things like field trips, playgrounds, equipment, basic student needs that maybe are not met because the PTA and PTO does not exist in a particular school. A portion of the ticket proceeds go to the fundraiser. You can get tickets early, and the largest portion of the proceeds from early sale tickets comes back to the school district, though game day tickets also have a portion of proceeds coming back. There's a bunch of information on the Sioux Falls School District Facebook page, so we encourage you to go out and check that out. Just brought a couple, seriously, just a very couple of the items that are going to be on the silent auction. Each of our high schools has provided something for the silent auction. We've had many great community supporters that have come forward with gift cards, gift baskets, a variety of things. Some among them, some really cool concert packages at the Denny Sanford Premier Center, so if you like concerts, that's something for you. Lola Elementary put together a summer fun package of items in a cooler to enjoy with your family. Garfield Elementary did gift cards galore, so they were going with the G theme. Everything is great at Garfield. So tons of other items out there and just something for the whole family. We did hear a nasty rumor that a weather system is working into our area for Saturday. We're choosing to believe that's going to miss us. This fundraiser is just that important. It's going to be the storm weather versus the storm. I don't know who's going to win, but you know, it doesn't really matter who wins, because in the end, Sioux Falls Elementary students will be the real winners from this fundraising event. So we thank the Sioux Falls Storm for their commitment to our kiddos. That then leads me into a great portion of our good news report tonight. Each fall, Sioux Falls parents and the entire community comes together for the President's Bowl, and again, carrying on with the football theme. That's a fantastic event for the whole family as well, where each of our schools comes together to sell tickets and have a great time. Lots of fundraising and raffling that goes off there as well to support our high schools. So Rich Brennanman was the president this past year. I believe he's excitedly ready to pass the torch onto a couple of other folks, but Rich is here this evening, is going to give us some highlights of this past President's Bowl year.
Thank you for having me today. Like I say, I want to bring you some good news about the President's Bowl. I was the past chair along with Ron Waltman for the 26th Annual President's Bowl for the 2017 season. We represented the Roosevelt Booster Club. We are in our second year of where we transferred the leadership to each school every year. So in 2016, Washington was in charge. 2017, Roosevelt was in charge, and then this one where they're in full swing, they're in a meeting right now, is Lincoln. They're in charge. But yeah, we have three main events in the President's Bowl season. A lot of people think it's just the football games in the fall, but in June, we have a 5K race, and then in November, we have the basketball tournament, and then obviously, we have the games in September. Just a quick highlight on the 5K race, we had over 150 participants in the race this year. That was a lot of fun. At the basketball tournament, we were able to use all three high schools once again for the tournament. We had over 62 teams involved in our basketball tournament, and then obviously, our big bet is the two bowl games in September. This year, we had Washington High School versus O'Gorman and Roosevelt versus Lincoln High. Some of the highlights was, we run a cheer camp in the beginning, which the three schools cheerleaders all help run with that, and then junior football is a great partner of ours. They put on a clinic for us every year. So like I say, they've been doing it for a number of years and a great partner. And then, like I say, through the tickets. But through all that work, our 82 local sponsors that we've had, ticket sales, the cheer clinic and everything, we were able to net out at $157,895 this year that we divided up amongst the three booster clubs, which then will go out to all the other activities for the students. And it's just not athletes, it's the bands, it's the fine arts, it's debate. So it goes to everybody. So we were able to, Lincoln High, we distributed a check for $52,810. For Roosevelt High School, we distributed a check for $52,675, and for Washington, $52,410. Went to their booster clubs that they get to pass on to the students and everything like that. So great effort between the three schools, they were able to come together. The bowl games are set for September 1st of this year, and there's going to be an amazing race, kind of going off the theme of the TV show in the end of June, and then we'll have the basketball tournament again. But once again, I just wanted to pass it on. Thank you for the time and the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rich is dashing off because there's a meeting of the President's Bowl across the hall, and he's writing a hand over the torch, right?
Yeah.
No, you're good to go. You're good to go, Rich.
Thank you.
And we have one other item we want to bring to your attention tonight. My colleague Ben Schumacher is going to come forward with that.
Good evening. Each year, the South Dakota Association of Supervision of Curriculum Development and the school administrators of South Dakota honor one person with the South Dakota Outstanding Curriculum Leader Award, and that person is otherwise known as the South Dakota Curriculum Leader of the Year. The criteria for this award includes being presently employed in an education-related position, having served at least three years in a school district or other educational agency in South Dakota, and having major job responsibilities in the area of curriculum development, advancement, or implementation. Moreover, the judging criteria for the award selection specifies that the winner must educate the whole child, impact students, show leadership and impact in the school or district, and contribute to the profession. The 2017-18 winner of the South Dakota Outstanding Curriculum Leader Award is in this room tonight, but she doesn't know she's won yet. She has also far exceeded any and all of the requirements and the selection criteria for this award. In the words of the press release, which will be published tomorrow, "This individual has used her skills gained through 30-plus years of education to lead change in practices and content in classrooms in the Sioux Falls School District. She has worked with administration, instructional coaches, and teachers to implement the social-emotional learning component into the English Language Arts curriculum. She is a constant advocate for all students to receive instruction around a guaranteed and viable curriculum so that schools can ensure access and equity of instruction for all students. Building the capacity of teachers to impact the learning for students has been this individual's focus and personal interest. She goes above and beyond by researching the professional development opportunities that will impact the needs of Sioux Falls students. It's this individual's vision and belief that all students can achieve that has helped the students of the Sioux Falls School District to receive an outstanding education, has helped teachers to develop, and has helped administration to achieve specific goals. It's easy to understand why she is this year's South Dakota Curriculum Leader of the Year. Please join me in congratulating the 27-18 South Dakota Outstanding Curriculum Leader Award winner, Dr. Sue McAdara." We don't have a physical award to present Sue this evening, but there will be a ceremony in August where she will be recognized, and our announcement tonight beats, again, the official press release, which will be released tomorrow. So I don't know if Sue has anything to share, or if anyone who nominated her would like to say anything, but we're very proud of her and can't wait to share this news with the world. Thank you.
I was sneaking looks over at you, Sue, and I'm like, she doesn't know. She doesn't, she really doesn't have a clue. Congratulations. So proud to have you part of our organization and for all you do, and just thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Conflicts of interest, I didn't see any this board meeting, so we'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Can I get a motion in a second, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. All right, that motion passes. Supplemental consent agenda. Items 9A, Claims to Sanford. Can I get a motion in a second, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion passes with two abstentions from Board Member Ryder and Board Member Mickelson. All right, now we're on to the reports of the superintendent. Dr. Maher.
Thank you. Our first report tonight is a special education review. This information will come to you from Deb Mullenberg-Wilson, and maybe just before she starts, I would like to thank her for all of the work that she did and a whole lot of other people did. But the report, you can judge for yourself, but it's a great report, and it comes on the heels of a whole lot of opportunities to not look so good, and yet we looked really good. I think that's the reflection of a whole lot of people, but it's truly the reflection of their leader. And so Deb, thank you. Congratulations, and I'll turn it over to you.
I do kind of feel like I get to be Deanne tonight and give the good news report. I would never be Deanne, but anyway. So we were a part of the state accountability review this year. I'll give you some background on what it is and what we all did, and then we can celebrate those accomplishments. And really, the people who should celebrate aren't here. So, anyway, why a state accountability review? The federal law, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, tells state departments that they have to have an accountability system, and that system needs to improve educational results and functional outcomes for students with disabilities, as well as ensure that the public agency meets the program requirements of the law. So in South Dakota, our state schedules routine reviews every four years, and they have an option to schedule those with more frequency and less time if they so see a need in a district. This was a routine four-year visit to Sioux Falls. So it started really last July, and it came to closure in January. We received the written report the middle of March from the state. It happened across multiple environments. They were onsite multiple times during this year, as well as we provided multiple submissions of data and information from our office to them in peer. So who does it? The South Dakota Department of Ed, Office of Special Ed Programs, sends staff from their department in peer and any contracted staff they have across the state. When they come to Sioux Falls, it takes everyone they have to get us done. And the state special ed director and I have had opportunity to talk about at some point how that's going to look, because we're growing faster than they are. So I think that will be a discussion over the years ahead. So what did they all do in this process? Started with them verifying our December 2016 child count. They looked at all 3,476 students that are federally reported in that count, and they validated all the data that we submit to the feds to assure we hadn't inaccurately done any reporting. Then they went through our comprehensive plan, which you approve every summer, to make sure all of our special education procedures were in alignment with the federal law. They came onsite in October and interviewed 10 IEP teams at different sites across our district, and then they interviewed those 10 principals and 10 general ed teachers alone, and each of them were asked questions that would draw back to, are we really implementing the procedures that we've written in our plan? Then they interviewed Mr. Knoll and Dr. Boyson and Kate Bartel, Milwaukee, and I, to make sure we knew what we should be doing for students with disabilities according to our plan, and I think we passed the test there. Then they audited every one of our special education employees who are certified in our state to make sure what they were doing matched, what they were certified to do. And then they interviewed part of the special services leadership team and focused that on our practices for assessment, coordinated early interviewing services, and our outcomes that are reported through the state performance plan and how students with disabilities are performing according to our state targets. And then finally, the part that staff would tell you about, most notably, they were here for a week in January. They were in 359 individual students' files. Every special education teacher and speech-language therapist had an opportunity to sit with a state reviewer and to answer questions and go through all the compliance points of that file. Needless to say, that raises a great level of anxiety for anybody. Even if you know everything, it's still an anxious activity for our staff. So between the two documents they looked at in each of those files, there are over 300 compliance points, or sometimes I say to staff, opportunities to make a human error. And of course, they're looking for every one of them. So in Deb's editorial version, what does that mean? In those 359 files, we had over 107,700 opportunities where we could have found an error, and it wouldn't mean that we were bad. It would mean we're human in a very detailed job. So in the end, after much discussion, the state has asked or told us to provide some training so that we can get better on some topics. Those include making sure everything's written in all areas on two special ed documents, ensuring that the individual team page that we fill out when we make a student eligibility has everything on it for students with specific learning disabilities, record students who have disabilities' participation with their non-disabled peers more thoroughly, and for our students who have finished at the high school and are eligible till 21, to provide more detail in their course of study. None of these issues were systemic, meaning everywhere they went, they were a problem. They just saw this as areas we as a district could work to improve. So we have staff trainings going on now on all of those topics. We'll have the required documentation that validates what we did, and I'll submit that to the state. Their timeline is within a one year. My timeline is by the end of the year, so that staff can start next year with this behind them and not have to think backwards, keep thinking forwards. There were 10 files from all of those files that had an individual non-compliant item in them, not 300 items, but one. So we are working with those teams right now to reconvene their IEP team and to make the necessary updates in that case. None of those errors were at a level that would implement any fiscal penalties on the district. So in my opinion, we got an A on that review. If you do the math, which some of you know I make a lot of sense out of the world through math, you take those 107,700 opportunities, we could have been found, and we have what we have in front of us. I think we should feel awesome as a district about that review. I think our staff should be celebrating. In my last email to them, I said, pat your neighbor on the back and pat yourself on the back. What went on was good, and what you do is good. Overall, I think that we as a district were affirmed that we are implementing the IDEA with the, you know, with what it wants us to do. Yep, there's a lot of details, and yep, there are things that we're going to get better at, but none of it was systemic, and none of it is a reflection that we aren't implementing that law with integrity. So I end by saying, go special ed staff. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Deb?
No question but a comment. I, obviously, as a nurse, I've worked with regulatory bodies where they come in and they check your work, and I understand the anxiety that goes into that, knowing that you're doing what you're supposed to do, but still doubting yourself.
Absolutely.
And so in the meantime, they're still teaching kids, and they're still doing lesson planning, and they're still doing all those things. And so congratulations to not just you, but all of them for the hard work.
Yes.
Because that is a really stressful time. Like you said, anytime there's somebody that's kind of checking your work, doesn't matter how great you are, we're all human. And so that's a huge accomplishment that your staff made and something that we should all definitely celebrate with them. So thank you very much.
As the year has gone on, I kept sending emails to the principals, take care of people. This is stressful for them. And so it truly has been a whole district effort to help all of those staff get through that experience. It's awesome.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Well, I think this is the third one of these reports that I've gotten to sit in on as a board member, and of course, going back longer than most of you have been alive involved in special ed, I know how much work you and all of your team put in, and to get this kind of a report back, I think is just incredible. You know, 3,500 kids in that program is, as I've said so many times, a gift to our school district, and good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, can I get a motion in a second to not acknowledge the special education review?
So moved. Second.
All right, and yeah, I would echo those thoughts, Deb. Kudos to your team, kudos to all the staff. It's amazing what the population that we have in our school district and how well we do with them. So, thank you. All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Right, that passes. And on to the next report.
Okay, the second report this evening is the Spanish Immersion Program Review conducted by the American Council on the Teaching of Foreign Languages Report. Here to present that report to us tonight from Curriculum Services is Ann Smith.
Good evening. The Spanish Immersion Program began in the fall of 2008 with one section of kindergarten at Rosa Parks Elementary. Since that time, the program has grown to include 757 students in grades K through 9. To ensure that the Spanish Immersion Program continues to improve and provide the best possible bilingual education experience for our students, the district contracted with the American Council on the Teaching of Foreign Languages, hereafter I will call it ACTFOL, which is a little less of a mouthful, to conduct a professional review. The review focused on the seven strands identified by the Guiding Principles for Dual Language Education, Third Edition. Those strands are program structure, curriculum, instruction, assessment and accountability, staff quality and professional development, family and community, support and resources. This program review consisted of preparatory discussions that began in July and August. Those discussions were held with the ACTFOL Director of Education, Paul Sandrock, and then there was a three-day onsite visit by ACTFOL World Language and Immersion Consultant Dawn Samples, who was here January 8th through the 10th. The review also included a review of district supplied evidence, including stamp and Smarter Balance scores. The final report, a 65-page document, which I will not read to you in its entirety tonight, identifies the areas of strength and offers recommendations for further improvement of the program. I've studied the report, and I've tried to distill it down into some broad themes. The following strengths of the program were highlighted several times throughout the report and emerged as the key highlights of strength. The greatest strength of the program is the enthusiastic support shown by all stakeholders: students, parents, teachers, administrators, and the community. That support is perhaps best evidenced by the fact that we have an elementary building entirely devoted to the Spanish Immersion Program. This is something that is unusual but is a dream for many programs, and so we can be very proud of that. Another strength is that our program is aligned with integrity to the best practices in terms of language use in the classroom. Classroom teachers have a strong practice of using the language exclusively in the immersion language courses academic parts of the day. The report also comments that in interviews with the teaching staff, they express that they feel very well supported by the district. The third strength is the integrated performance assessments that are being developed by the staff at Sonia Sotomayor Elementary. These IPAs, as we call them, will ultimately provide language performance data on the students in grades K through 5 and better inform teachers regarding their students' language needs. Of course, the report also identifies some recommendations for continued improvement of the program. First, ensure that there is a structure and process in place to, A, provide professional learning for the teachers on how to reflect on and learn instructional strategies and practices that support second language development; be sure that that structure and process informs curriculum needs; and that the structure and process helps to write a second language and literacy curriculum that will support the learning needs of students in their other content areas. Second recommendation is that we engage in deliberate planning and coordination of curriculum instruction and assessment across the two languages of instruction. This planning should be guided by a common mission and vision that can be easily communicated by all stakeholders. As the program expands to other levels, middle and high school, there must be ongoing reflection and analysis of students' language abilities to guide course selection and changes in curriculum design, scheduling, or expectation. And then finally... And then finally, it strongly recommended that the district continue the strong relationship between the parent advocates for Spanish immersion, Pasi, and the district. This relationship is working in very positive ways to further the success of the program. Pasi and district leadership will need to determine to what level and how they would like to support ways for students to take their language beyond the classroom and serve in real-world settings to facilitate communication between Spanish speakers and English speakers. The report that I've written for you doesn't necessarily, does not give what are the district's next steps. A logical question is, okay, so now what? We have these recommendations, what will we do? So, I did want to just share with you what we have already put in place and will start working on in the coming weeks and months. We are forming a Spanish immersion advisory group that will have representation from all stakeholders, teachers, administrators, parents, and students. The meeting has been set for next week, next Tuesday. At this first meeting of the advisory group, one of our first things that we will look at is articulating a common vision and mission of the Spanish immersion program. It's important that, at the current time, we have, Pasi has a mission statement, Sonia Sotomayor has a mission statement, we articulated one for the program a couple, last year in the fall. How many mission statements do you need? You really need one that everyone can get behind for the program. So, that's what we want to have a good look at. What can that common vision and mission be that we can truly get behind so that it guides our curriculum and development going forward? Also, at that advisory group meeting, we'll have a conversation about what is the role of this advisory group? Why are we forming this new group? The advisory group will not be a decision-making group. It will be a group that really is to provide a systematic way so that we can be sure we're gathering feedback from all stakeholders in a regular way, so that we can have that feedback as the program continues to develop and evolve. And then, we will take some time to just take a look at what, how are things going at the middle and high school level? Is that curriculum working? Do we need to start, is it the way we want it to be, or are there ways that it can be improved? The next step that we'll be taking pending budget approval, which is coming up soon, will be to look at hiring a teacher on special assignment for Spanish immersion. The successful candidate for this position would be someone who is bilingual or multilingual with a strong understanding of teaching language in an immersion program. Because this position will have duties beyond a typical instructional coach, we're calling it a teacher on special assignment rather than instructional coach. Things that they'll be doing that aren't typically in an instructional coach role include more direct curriculum development responsibilities, as well as responsibilities for helping develop communication about the program. And then, this summer, we'll be getting groups together and start establishing those language targets and cultural competency targets for each grade, K through 12. Sonia Sotomayor has already gotten a start on that, but we'll be looking at expanding what they've done, and then how do we take that K-12? The cost of the contract with ACTFOL was $7,750. I feel like it was money that was well-spent. It's given us good information that we can use over the next few years to really begin to take a serious look at how do we keep this program growing and how do we help it become the best it can possibly be. With that, I would ask that the board would acknowledge the report of the Spanish immersion program review conducted by the American Council on the Teaching of Foreign Languages.
Thanks, Ann. Do we have any, can I get a motion in a second to approve the report? Or, sorry, you know what? Let's start with questions. We have questions for you.
Okay.
Can we have the people talk first?
I do.
I have a question too, but I'll let you go first, Dr. Meyer.
Well, I know the answer, but I think the question needs to be asked. As you were speaking about, I think you said the second step that you plan to take, you plan to hire a teacher on special assignment pending budget approval. And you articulated why a teacher on special assignment and not an instructional coach. If I hear teacher on special assignment, I think temporary position. Is it your intent that that's a temporary position?
No. We, in trying to find the correct title for it, if you look at the report, they sometimes, they suggest such a position and they call it a coordinator. In this district, a coordinator is an administrative position, so we don't want to call it a coordinator of the Spanish immersion program. It's not the same as our administrative interns. We had to come up with a title that doesn't put it into an existing category but that gives us what we need, and it is not intended in any way to suggest that this is a temporary position.
That's what I thought.
The contract with ACTFOL, is this just a one-time and done or?
Yes.
Five-year review, so just?
Just, yeah, one-time done. They certainly did indicate that they would be happy to come in in three years or five years or however often.
I'm sure they would.
If we wanted to invite them back.
Right, and pay for it as well. Any other questions? And then, we will get to public comment, I promise. Just want to get through some questions, if any board members have any.
I'm curious about the advisory group. How will people know if, because if the goal is for them to be able to gather feedback and bring that back for discussion, will that be like, will people know who are on that group, and will those minutes be shared with the stakeholders so that they know what's going on at those meetings or know who to contact if they wanted to provide?
Yes, as we get the group rolling forward and we'll have, we'll be developing all of those things. We'll be developing, what's the term going to look like? And even at that first meeting, we're going to have some discussions. Is this the right makeup? Should we have more of, do we need more parents and more students? And it's not to say that over time, we might not expand it more as we have more students who are older and who have been through the program. The communication that we'd want to, the intention of the group is for the communication to go back and forth between all the stakeholder groups. So, yes, we'll be doing everything we can to publish minutes, make sure that all of that information is being shared.
And was there an application process, or how were people selected?
No, quite honestly, right now, we just wanted to get people together to start the discussions. And we're not even saying that the people that we're bringing together next Tuesday are going to be the ones that are going to be the official terms or whatever. It's really just to get started. What can this look like? How will it operate?
Who will take the lead and kind of?
I will. Yep.
Any other questions? All right, we'll open it up for public comment. We have, I have five names of people that wanted to talk on this topic. Our board policy says if we have more than three, you guys all have 15 minutes, so you can divide your time up how you would like. I would also like to remind you of our board policy and just make sure that we understand that you may not give oral complaints regarding district personnel or personnel actions. Any complaints should go to, up to the superintendent. So, notice the speaker may not offer any personal attacks against any individual, and the speaker may not give oral complaints identifying individual students. So, just want to make sure that we keep those items in mind as we have some public input. So, whoever would like to come up first, also, board policy just requires that you give us your name and your address. So, you guys can all start. It's public input, so it's your time to talk to us.
15 minutes total for everyone? So, do we have a moment to discuss?
Sure.
How?
Yep, absolutely.
Present that in a?
Yep.
Do I give my address again?
Yes, please. Sorry, Shannon.
That's okay. My name is Shannon Graver. Changed my address. 1720 East Edgewood Road. So, I just wanted to say quickly, thank you very much for having this review. I was thrilled to see that it was out there, and immersion is something I've been passionate about, and in 2008, I was very passionate, and I still have that same passion, but it's changed. And I think what's interesting, at least as far as myself and watching, is that I had a lot of enthusiasm, of course, seeing your little five-year-old speak Spanish, but enthusiasm doesn't educate. And so, to see that there's a depth of, what are we doing with the curriculum? We need, I see that we have things to improve, and so, I'm anxious to read, and I'm going to read 65 pages. Sorry, I need a life, right? But, I'm just so thankful for it, and I want, I really hope that everybody takes a lot of serious consideration about the improvements that are suggested, because I feel like they do know immersion, and we can have a legacy program here, but we have some holes to fill, and I'm thrilled that you're willing to look at those and be realistic about those and make decisions, and I think you've got some great things going on, so thank you.
Thank you.
Gracias for allowing me to speak today. My name's Megan Anderson. Live at 609 West Garden Place here in Sioux Falls, technically in the Harris-Blumberg School District, but I, my daughter goes to the Spanish immersion program as a kindergarten there. I was raised in Sioux Falls, and I'm an English speaker, but I also lived abroad and attended a Spanish language school in La Fundación Ortega y Gasset in Spain, where I acquired a level of competency or fluency in Spanish to be fortunate enough to be able to help out my daughter and help in the classroom. I would note that I was disappointed that we could not review the 65 pages before coming here. I feel hamstrung that I can't comment on some areas that, content areas that I understand and that I can have meaningful suggestions on. The executive summary of the ACTFOL seems to suggest that the planning and coordination of that curriculum, instruction, and assessments needs to be engaged in a thoughtful and cohesive manner, and I'm excited about that. The school was assessed underneath those guiding principles by the Dual Language Education written by the Center for Applied Linguistics, and the stated mission, I was really thrilled to hear they're going to change the stated mission and work on that, because I heard Ann Smith talk about it being a bilingual program, but the stated mission on the Sonia Sotomayor website talks about multilingual learners at Sonia Sotomayor. And that doesn't really reflect what's happening, reflect what's happening in the classroom, how it's assessed or how it's functioning, because they're teaching English and Spanish, which makes it a bilingual and multicultural program by having individuals from all over Latin America and Spain. As you continue on the website, it also suggests that the children, students are reading, writing, and speaking at school, and this is accurate, that is what they're doing. But we're missing, as a foreign language learner, we are missing one of the key components on our website about what we're doing. We're not listening. Language acquisition requires listening also, and this is how I feel like it was remiss to have that component missed. So, I ask you today, are we listening to what the program needs? And I challenge the board to do that as you review the assessment. Can our dual-language program benefit from bilingual positions, more bilingual positions and administrative positions and supports that help assess the teacher's performance and instruction and curriculum support, like professional development standards work, et cetera? Competency in Spanish requires being able to listen in Spanish. Evaluating, assessing, and building curriculum requires being able to understand those, have comprehension in Spanish. Strategic planning for those components for a dual-language program demands that second language, and if the board is ready to make that a priority, and it sounded like we were from what Ann had to say, is that we need to find and hire individual, I guess not find and hire, I think we have individuals here that are competent, that understand the program and what's going on in it, and where there needs to be some, fill some gaps to go ahead and do that. Promote finding a culture or a way to cultivate career pathways for our teachers, the really good teachers that know what they're doing and are ready to help others. Finding them those career pathways into those positions, I think, is really what needs to happen here. So, another question I have is, do we, I have is, do we have the capacity to focus on all of ACTFOL's recommended priorities in this 65-page report? I don't know, because I didn't get to read it. But, I think that, you know, one new position to cover three schools, and I'm not entirely sure how many teachers there are, but 40, 40-plus teachers, will that, is that sufficient to meet the needs of our students and to fix some of the issues in this report? We need some more of those bilingual positions and administrators that can evaluate and help us continue to promote the Spanish language immersion experience. One other thing I wanted to address also is, are, is the board willing to look at this again? I would recommend that this board hold another meeting once the report has been posted for further discussion on ACTFOL's recommendations, and come up with an action plan as to what are we going to do, how are we going to implement this, how long is it going to take to do those things? Like I said, I'm very, very excited that they're going to hire someone to help out, but I suggest that we need more than one person. Another question that came up from Ann's, her, what she had to say is, who is going to be on the Spanish immersion advisory board? Are we having bilingual people on there that understand, you know, parents also that are understanding of these types of programs and issues? I'm really excited about this program. We moved all the way from Pierre to come here to this program. We're so excited about it. Gracias and viva los logos. Thank you.
Pause it, we've got teachers that want to talk.
This is scary.
Yeah.
I'm Eliana Gutierrez, and I'm a teacher of the program, and I'm also a future mom. My son will be in kindergarten in a couple of years, so. I am here because after reading the review, the general review was really vague for me. A lot of questions came up. I really, as Shannon said, would like to read the whole thing. Maybe some of my concerns of answers to my questions were there, so I just wanted to share with you a little bit of my questions and things that I come up to my head right now. I've been in the school with the Spanish immersion, the program since 2010, almost since the beginning. I love the program, and I believe 100% in it. My son will be in it, because I think it works, and I believe in all the research that is behind. So, after all the reading, so, I think as a teacher right now, there are a lot of things that we need. We need meaningful and useful feedback in our practices in the immersion classroom. Research has already shown our best strategies in immersion. So, as you know, non-immersion classroom and immersion classrooms are unique in so many ways. So, therefore, we need feedback to address the challenges, teachers, we face every day in the classroom. So, that's one thing. We also need professional development and support in the classroom that could provide the best practices to enclose language and content. These two things need to go together hand to hand, so the improvement of language will result in academic achievement and successful bilinguality and by cultural students, and I think that's huge for us. Students will be able to use social Spanish. That was, most people believe that kids use social Spanish, but we also need academic Spanish to talk about different topics in the content areas. Some of those professional development ideas that came out to my mind, and I really hope that this person can work on or using our plan for the future, is develop a language assessments with content embedded to communicate to parents accurately the level of language and proficiency. That is the IPAs that Ann was talking about. That is the IPAs that Anne was talking about, so we need that professional development too, so we can do it. We also need professional development on corrective feedback strategies to address students' language errors and to improve accuracy, complexity, and fluency in the target language. And finally, research-based instructional practices to support and enhance second language acquisition and development. There are a lot of out there things that we need to be doing and that we need to learn, so basically. So, and as a future mom, I see my son coming to the school and I'm so happy and excited that he's going to keep his language. He doesn't speak any Spanish right now, so he needs the school and so I'm really excited, but I'm also worried that I don't see that there is like one direction where the program's going and there is a lack of consistency across the levels. So I just want my son to receive the best because I believe that the school has all the potential, all the stuff, all the power, the passion for the program, for bilingualism, for teaching, so it's just to have that direction where we need to go. So, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Aida Cortez, 5102 South Bend, Derry Avenue. I'm a current teacher, first grade teacher of the Spanish immersion program. I'm also a mom of a kindergartner, right there in the back. I wanted to share with you my input. This input comes from having a shared view of being a mom and a teacher at the same time. I've been for five years in the program. I love the program. My two kids, one is in there and my son will be there too. We just love the program and we love the community, but with, I, as a teacher, a mom, I can see some of the, some failures that we have and that as a mom, I think that we need to address like as soon as we can. I wish also to have been able to look at the full, full report. We, in the, at school, we have been very, very excited about this visit. It's Actful, it's a very, it's a recognized entity and it's been really, really nice to know that they're reviewing the program and we'd like to have that input for the full, the full review or the report to know what, what we really need to work on as the staff, community, towards the benefit of the program. So I'm really looking forward to see how these recommendations in the report will address what we need currently at school, especially with the support that, right now I'm talking as a teacher, that we need for the professional development, the needs that we have right now. Language immersion, Spanish language immersion is not a dual-immersion program. It's a very unique way of that, of those immersion programs and it has really special needs. It can be just, right now, my, one of my biggest concern, concerns as a teacher is that we have, we have a wonderful curriculum that we just adapted, the collaborative classroom. But for us, that is just content being delivered to the students using the language, but our mission should be delivering the language through the content. So our goal there is kind of lost, but we would say our main goal should be teaching the language for them. Our main target would be, objective would be teaching that language, that I think that view, that target has, has been lost some, some way in that. So I would really like to see that opportunity to have the program that we have, the language programs we have aligned with what we currently need in our program with that, those language needs. For that, I really hope that the recommendation of hiring another teacher on a special assignment, I would really like to see how that person can help us in starting to see how the background that this person brings to the program is appropriate to what we really need. That background, I mean, it has to be related with Spanish immersion and about language there, if it is going to be, if he is going to be a native speaker. Sometimes when, when we talk about being fluent in Spanish, it can be just fluent in reading the Spanish but not talking. And what we need at school for teachers is someone that can support that need of the language, that can communicate with us in that language, that has that bandwidth.
Spanish immersion. No, that's okay. Thank you. Figure out how to turn it off.
It'll take a minute.
There we go.
You don't know what was going through my head right then.
It's okay. Thank you, all of you. I do want to just make sure the, the report will be made public and we certainly will, would welcome your questions after you get an opportunity to read it. I think this was just a very high preliminary review of, of what we, what we received, so I think we'll all have some time to read it and digest it and come back. If you still have questions, certainly feel free to come back and, and ask those questions. So we have a motion in a second? No, not yet. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the report, please?
So move.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion?
I would just like to add that I think for me as a board member and also as a parent, I too was a little disappointed in the information that was shared and the lack of specific goals and I appreciate that Anne talked about those today, but I would also like to have some specific things maybe in writing. And I hear teachers and I hear parents and I hear lots of people talking about professional development and that wasn't something that I heard Anne talk about, so I'd like to learn more about what the plan is from that perspective because I think, as you mentioned, it is very unique. It's not, you can't sit into an in-service that we're giving to every single other elementary school in Sioux Falls and get the same information and be able to go back and apply that to your same classroom. And so I think I, I too am very anxious to read the report and I'm sure it's filled with a lot of information and the goal of this is, is high level to say we did this and we're excited about what's going to come from this. I just want to see more about how are we supporting teachers so that they can in turn support our students more too. So that's the only additional feedback that I would add.
Were you disappointed in not having the special education report as well tonight?
What do you mean by that?
We didn't have the full.
Like the full report?
Yeah.
I don't understand, I guess I don't understand the question.
You were disappointed in not having this full report, the report previous to this. I was wondering, as a board member, were you equally disappointed not having that report in advance of this evening?
I guess to me they're different.
And I, I'm going to get in the middle of this. To me, they're not different. We have two programs that are equally important. We have 3,500 students in our special ed programs. We have 757 or whatever the count is at Sonia Sotomayor. The school district, this, the school district has invested significant resources over 10 years to help develop this program. We have taken the commitment to a Spanish immersion program. I'll speak for myself as a board member. I've taken that commitment very seriously. We have had numerous times of public input from parents and advocates for our immersion program. I applaud the amount of time that is given by parents to the program. I believe in my, in my role as a member of the school board that I have been an advocate for the program for building a brand-new building, to house it, to expand it over a period of 10 years, I just think is a, is a tremendous commitment. We, we have, we have students in there that are learning the language, they're learning the culture. We are committing an additional staff person to make sure that all of those things that are put into place are done well. As with any other report that we get anytime through the year, every parent that is impacted by that can either talk to the principal at your school, you can send your comments and your concerns and your questions to the superintendent. And the getting down into those details is what we have very highly qualified, well-educated administrators to do. And I encourage you to take those concerns and questions to them. The, the report will be made public and it, you can get down into as, as much detail and into the weeds as much as you want, once that is made public. And, and I, I'm not lecturing. I am, I'm supportive of this program. I have fought hard since its inception 10 years ago to make sure that it's successful and to give the time and the, the effort to every student, every teacher, every parent. And I think that that commitment's going to continue. Talk to Dr. Maher, talk to the principal and your questions will be answered and they'll be addressed.
Anne, could we have a date when that will be made public, just so that they can be informed, so when they can look or?
It will be posted to the website tomorrow.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And please know that any board meeting prior, even if it's not on our agenda, you are welcome to address, come address us or email us beforehand too, so, once that report becomes public. So, thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right, that passes. Moving on.
Our next report tonight is a report on the 2019 proposed budget and we'll have a public hearing. I'll turn it over to Mr. Veek.
Thank you, Dr. Maher and members of the board. You began your budget process last November. The board then adopted guidelines and timelines for the budget process between December and February. 19 subcommittees comprised of administration, professional and classified, thanks Ben, and community people developed program budgets which were then presented to the Budget Review Committee in March. It was about 150 different people on those committees. Budget Review Committee included two board members and representation from those smaller committees. The Budget Review Committee met in March to review the committee recommendations and we held a board work session a week ago on April 4th. The budget presented to the board is being heavily influenced by a second year of minimal state aid increases. Last year, the increase was 0.3% and for FY19, next year, it is 1%. Additionally, the general fund revenue is being reduced by over $1 million. As discussed by the school board, at least at last year's budget meeting, the district is attempting to increase teacher and other staff salaries at a level consistent with the rest of society while not decimating the rest of the budget. The FY19 five-year plan spends into the fund balance by about $900,000. The figure is lower than projected last year, but that is being driven by a $5.75 million transfer to the general fund from the capital outlay fund. I should point out that it's an accounting, part of that is an accounting change. Prior to this year or to next year, we were budgeting a reduction in general fund expenditures, allowed reduction in general fund expenditures of the capital outlay. Last year, that was $2.6 million. This year, they want, they want us to start showing that as a revenue and just spend the money out of the general fund and, and show the, the amount as a, as a revenue. So we've got built into the plan a one-time transfer of $5.4 million, then note, then that would go away. The lowest projected fund balance over the five-year period is 5.4% and in the out-years and the fifth year, we project a 9% fund balance. Last year, our five-year plan had projected a low of 3.5, so this plan is actually doing better than that. Here's some highlights on the revenue side. $1 million new state aid formula funds, which includes of course both state aid and property taxes due to increased enrollment and increased ELL enrollment. $1.3 million in additional state aid formula funds due to a 1% increase in the first student allocation. A $900,000 in reduced state aid due to reallocation of other fund revenues. Eventually, we'll be a winner on that, but, but in the short term, we're a loser as they phase this in, so that's costing us about $900,000 next year. $1.6 million in additional property tax revenues due to the additional $5 million opt-out. Last year, we did it in September after the board had already approved the budget. It's showing up in next year's budget. $1.1 million reduction in federal funds. On the expenditure side, some of the more important expenditures, 2.4 million, 2.0, almost $2.5 million increase for salaries, which is approximately a 2.6%, 2.7% increase for the, all the groups. $1.1 million increase in health insurance, that's a 4.7% increase in other benefit increases. $1.74 million increase in elementary, middle, and high school instruction salaries due to an increase in students and the addition of a freshman academy at Lincoln High. $1.8 million decrease in curriculum services to fund the implementation of the new social studies curriculum. Last year was a really expensive curriculum, this year not so much. Going forward, we're going to budget a level amount. We talked about that at the work session. In years where it's less, we'll, we'll save the money, we'll reserve it. In years where it's higher, we'll spend into that reserve. So that will even out our budgeting as we, as we go forward. We have a $1.5 million decrease by eliminating the literacy in action program. That was presented in the February 26th board reports. There's a $213,000 increase in the ELL program to support students in those programs. There's a $650,000 increase in staff development. Does two things, provides an administrative intern at Roosevelt High because of the very large enrollments at, at Roosevelt and provides targeted and continuous staff development to first-year and veteran teachers through the instructional coaching program. It's offsetting, part of that is offsetting federal cuts, part of that's adding some staff to, to get full-time instructional coaches at the title schools. And about a, about a quarter of a million, $243,000 increase in admin legal services to continue to fund the district-initiated pilot study through Kinval Company. It creates a teacher pathway program and a middle school pilot behavior intervention program and continues the pilot teacher internship program. Those things were, a lot of those things were piloted this year and we're getting them into the budget now. The capital outlay levy will drop approximately $0.02 next year to about $2.85, while the special education levy is decreasing $0.10. The impact of the FY19 budget on the homeowners property tax rate is a drop in the projected levy from 8.28 to about 8.18 per $1,000 of assessed valuation. The average school property tax increase over the last 19 years for a typical house in Sioux Falls is approximately 1.1% per year. The administrative recommendation is to acknowledge the public hearing and tentatively approve the FY19 school district budget to allow human resources to offer employee contracts with the understanding that the budget will be brought forward for adoption and certification of levies at the annual meeting held July 9th. I'd stand by for questions and then we have to have the public hearings.
Any questions for Todd?
Well, just, just to clarify, the $5.75 million that's transferred from capital outlay into general fund, that's a one-time transfer. It's a bookkeeping, accounting change that was required, so it shows when we get over to the general ledger, the part that's in green or whatever, green or yellow, it shows for fiscal year 19, that $5.75 million, it's just the, it's an accounting change. That transfer occurs once. When you look across through FY23, that doesn't, that doesn't reoccur. That's a one-time transfer.
Yeah, that's right. The plan does not call for that and it replaced the offload of expense, which last year was 2.6, so it's a bit higher, but it's one-time and that's ongoing.
Right.
Any other questions for Todd? All right, we'll open it up to public hearing. Anyone wishing to talk about the budget? Anyone? Anyone? All right. Close the hearing, and can I get a motion to approve the proposed budget, fiscal year 2019 proposed budget?
So move.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. All right. We'll see that come back for final review, final approval in July. Policies. Early, you want to take those, or do you want me to take them?
If I can, you want, just jump in if I misspeak, please. So it is a normal effort of the school boards to make sure we review our policies on a routine basis. And so today, we are coming to you with policy KHC distribution or posting of information and political materials. There are no real changes to this policy, and so a second reading is not necessary. And so I think it's also attached for your review, but it was really minor things. So I would make a motion to approve the update or the review of policy KHC.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Okay. All right.
The next one is same story, three policies, and two of them have accompanying regulations. So we have JJAA, and it's accompanying regulation, high school activity rules. JJD, and it's accompanying regulation, student physicals for student or for school athletics. And then JKA, corporal punishment and crisis intervention. These three all do have changes made to them, and so we are going to do a first read today and then put them out for public comment on the district website. They will be available with their edits so that the public can review them and give any feedback that they may have on those. They will require a second reading, and they will be, like I said, they'll be posted and they will come back to the board on May 14th of 2018. So for today's purposes, if I could just make a motion to approve the first reading of these policies and regulations with the understanding that they will come back again on May 14th.
I have a question. Do we, oh, it's a motion in a se, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Same motion. Sorry. Sorry about that. With these new policies, did we have to consider, like, vaping as well?
It's on there as an inhaler, like any inhalant device.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. When you were specifically saying that.
But it's encompassing of that. Okay. I just want to make sure that.
Yeah. Attached to the school activity rules, there's a sort of grid of the, of the, what do we call them?
Like infractions.
Infractions and vaping's included in there.
Thank you very much.
Yep. All right. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. All right. We'll see those come back. May, is that what you said?
May 14th.
May 14th. Thank you. All right. Todd?
Good to be back. Attached, you will find in your, in your documents, you'll find the results of the election held yesterday, along with a proposed motion, which I will read. Acknowledging the canvas of the results of the school board race for the Sioux Falls School District annual election held on April 10th, 2018, for two, three-year terms for office of a member of the school board, with the results as follows. Candidate Pischke, 4,974. Candidate Parker, 17,382. And candidate Tulkey, 16,213. And declaring Kate Parker and Todd Tulkey as duly elected members of the school board for terms of three years commencing with the annual meeting to be held on July 9th, 2018. Once we make that motion, I will issue you each with your certificate of election.
So move.
Second. What?
Vote on it. I'm sorry.
Okay. Vote on it first. All right. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign.
You didn't ask for discussion.
I'm sorry. Any discussion?
No, it's too late.
Okay.
Thank you, Todd.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. All right. Anything else for good of the order? All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Adjourned. Thank you.